Good evening, everybody. How are you? Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting was sent to the Asbury Park Press on September 9th and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue on September 9th. All municipal clerks of the town, boroughs, and the Indian's Regional District have been duly notified and the requirements have been met with the September 6th posting. Please rise, join me in the pledge. Ms. Skanov, we have any changes to the executive?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was pre-printed prior to the meeting, the board also discussed, under Exception Number 7, the matter under Agency Reference Number 48-3/22. And that's all.
Thank you. I have a motion to take the minutes of the August 25th board meeting. Motion. I hear Mrs. Lavin. Second?
Second.
Mr. Perisi, second. Any discussion, Board? No discussion, roll call, please. Ms. Caffiello?
Upstain.
Ms. Hagley?
Upstain.
Ms. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Vannelli?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Yes. Just a reminder, all communications are on file at the Board of Education. Dr. Sampson, ready for your report?
I sure am. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So, just came from my daughter's senior night. I busted my wife's chops as the one to cry. And who's crying? It was me crying like crazy. So, I'm happy to be here, though. Happy to be able to make it back in time. So, we have a couple things that I want to do first. First and foremost, I'm going to introduce members of our Executive Student Cabinet who are here this evening. And a little background on the structure of that, the cabinet, and then I want to introduce the students who were selected to serve in that capacity for this year. About nine years ago, you know, we were looking for a way to continue to give more student voice into the district decisions and what that looks like. And we ended up saying, like, let's form an executive cabinet that serves in a real variety of capacities there. You're sort of, you don't know this yet, but you will know, guinea pigs for some of the things that we want to try or think about. Any type of questionnaire that goes out in the district or survey or things like that, oftentimes this group is the first group of students will ask to kind of read through it and ask what resonates, what doesn't. Does this make sense? And then really just to be the conduit to their building principal and the central administration about all that's happening in the high school on any given day. And this year is a strategic planning year for us. So, there's some real deep work that goes there. In our previous planning years, the Executive Student Cabinet members have really helped us run student focus groups, helped lead a lot of those conversations in the building. And, you know, one of our most sort of powerful data points, in my opinion, that we use to make decisions in this district are student focus groups and our student voice and the feedback that we get directly from the students who we serve. Because no matter how we draw it up, dream it up, think it up, it's not, it's happening to other folks in the buildings, right? And so, they're the ones who know what's working, what could be improved, and always ready to offer suggestions. So, when the state changed the policy asking for representatives to the Board of Education from students, we made the decision to take our Executive Student Cabinet members as we serve six high schools. And the way that we'll be moving this forward is to have the, when we're hosted, obviously, we take the roadshow to, you know, all different high schools. When we're hosted in a particular school moving forward after tonight, we have all of them here. But we'll have that individual representative, you know, provide a brief overview to the board event about some of the happenings in that particular homeschool. But I do, I want to, A, congratulate these young folks because they were, you know, this is not, it's not an easy process to be selected. This is one student being selected to represent the school on a district level. And there's, these students have demonstrated really exceptional leadership already prior to being named to this post, even be considered for the cabinet. So, I'll just go in school order and I'm just going to introduce, and I ask you each to stand and give a wave and if mom or dad, any audience, tell them to take a picture. From Coltsneck High School, we have Brielle Bravaco. From Freehold High School, we have Samuel Rodriguez. From Freehold Township High School, we have Peyton Lebov. From Howe High School, we have Leila Senzig. I have to weigh it down. I like that. From Analpan High School, we have Luca Neandrea. And from Marlboro High School, we have Jovita Joseph. I want to welcome the six of you. We're excited for the work that's going to happen. And, you know, October 6th is our first significant planning session for the upcoming, the development of our upcoming strategic plan. This district's been really fortunate to be guided by two five-year plans. We'll be developing the third. And, you know, while our plans are certainly long-term in nature, we also build them explicitly to be flexible and nuanced, to pivot when we need to pivot. And largely, how we pivot are from feedback from students, right? When something is or isn't working the way that we planned it. So, welcome, congratulations. And Board, you'll be hearing more from this group in meetings to come. All right. Second important item here before we get to some of the aspects of my report. Typically, in September, meetings very late this year. You know, it just fell that way in September. But the September Board meeting is always the time where we recognize our support staff members of the year from each of the buildings. And so, what I'd like to do is I'm going to just ask each individual, I'll call your name, I'm going to read a little blurb about you that was presented from the folks who nominated you. And then what we're going to do is, Dr. Hazel has a plaque over there that we're going to ask you to come up one at a time and present that. And then we're going to take a picture right here. Too many, did I say too many instructions at once? It's a lot, right? That's what we're going to do. So, I'm going to go in school order again. You know, as I'm talking about, you come up and get your award so folks can see who you are. All right. Nili Guebe from Coltsneck High School. Ms. Guebe, paraprofessional for nine years. She provides academic, emotional, and behavioral support for students in the Learning and Language Disabilities Program. She is hardworking, compassionate, dedicated to the students, always enjoys collaborating with other staff members, and has creative ideas to keep students engaged, and above all, is very patient. Beyond the classroom, she participates in Cougar Connection, the Talent Show, and many athletic events. She's the lead support staff member for Comfort Closet at Coltsneck High School, which provides supplies, personal hygiene products, and clothing for students and families in need. Congratulations, Ms. Guebe. Next, and is Rich Colaruso here? He made it. Okay. I knew we had a, you had a daughter engagement as well, right? Okay. So, Richard Colaruso from Freehold High School. Ms. Colaruso has been a paraprofessional for 11 years. He has assisted the students at Freehold High School in an array of programs ranging from the COG Mile to LLD Resource to In-Class Resource. He always takes the time to connect with his students, builds positive relationships to support their needs throughout the day. And whether it's finding a way to make students smile by sharing jokes, de-escalating a situation, shooting some hoops, I like that, or assisting students on their vocational training sites, Mr. Colaruso is always 100% supportive of students. Congratulations. From Freehold Township High School, Lisa Mays. Ms. Mays has been a paraprofessional for the past seven years. Since the start of her career, she has been working in the Workplace Training Program, serving as both a paraprofessional and a job coach. She's an absolute role model for every student. Ms. Mays believes that every student enhances opportunities to support their individual growth continuously. Ms. Mays not only supports students within the building, but throughout the entire community as a job coach. With every interaction and experience, she is always willing to share her insights and experiences with the students she serves. Congratulations, Ms. Mays. Austin Folkes from Howe High School. Ms. Folkes has been a paraprofessional for five years. She has proven herself to be a reliable and dependable staff member and is always incredibly professional and going above and beyond for the students she serves. She has worked with students with varying needs that face challenges with strength and calmly, and faces those challenges with strength and calmness for her students. Her compassion and support for every student ensures their success. She has demonstrated that she is an absolute team player who is always willing to go the extra mile for all the students she serves. Congratulations.
An outstanding gymnast. She was one of my students at Howe High School, an all-state gymnast. It's good to see you getting back to the school.
That was not in my report, Mr. Bruno. Mary Witt from Analpan High School. Ms. Witt has been a paraprofessional for 19 years. She has always found ways to positively impact her students and serves as a role model to all students. She teaches students the importance of believing in themselves and persevering on complex tasks, whether it's in the classroom or at a job site. She consistently offers specific feedback to students to help them grow in their skills and praises them for a job well done. She supports an Analpan school store and hosts a Job Coach Breakfast for the families as this event serves to showcase the student accomplishments. Congratulations, Ms. Witt. And finally, from Marlboro High School, Kathy Savical. Kathy Savical has been a paraprofessional for 13 years. She is an empathetic, caring professional who brings a positive attitude to the department and the lives of the students she serves. She is not only extremely dedicated to supporting students, but she always goes above and beyond to assist her colleagues, teachers, and the school itself. Her flexible nature is always appreciated as she can be relied on to meet the needs of all students in any setting, in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Kathy.
Are we standing in the corner? Come up here. Nobody puts baby in the corner.
Congratulations.
Everybody has a case now.
Come get your boxes for your awards. If you got an award, there's boxes here. Come get your box.
All right. I'm going to continue with the report and congratulations. It's, you know, we always like to recognize you. You know, a school community has an inordinate number of folks that are responsible for the well-being of children. And our support staff in particular, really, you know, that's the nitty-gritty day-to-day of really helping, you know, some of our media students in the district. So, it's important work and I'm happy to, happy to honor those folks. Also, just want to point out that we have a special guest. Mrs. Jewell is back in the house, back there.
Thank you. First time back. It's January 2021.
Welcome back.
No, we miss you, little thing. So, just a couple things for my report. You know, the start of the school year this year was so much better than the past couple of years, right? We were no longer encumbered by incredibly nuanced executive orders, roads back, 95-page documents about what to do and not to do. And, you know, I went back and looked at our school communication from the past couple of years versus the school communication from this year. And, you know, I know in my welcome back letter, I made a point of saying, like, hey, fresh start, let's go, right? Like, it was brief. It wasn't the 12-page treatise on, you know, War and Peace that the previous couple of years really took. But, you know, it took a community to get through that pandemic, and it's going to take a community to continue to move forward from the pandemic, right? You know, we know that life was altered dramatically for all members of our school community, students, staff. And we know that there's a process to, you know, continuing to stay on a path that's, you know, the path that we want to be on, right? And so, this school opening this year was, you know, like most other school openings prior to the pandemic, you know. We still have students that really had a hard time of it in the pandemic. And we know that we recognize that and we're tackling that work head-on. But in a lot of other ways, it was, it just felt good to be back. And one of the things that I said during my address to the faculty and staff was that, you know, the past couple of years were difficult to even get to know some of the new staff members because there was just an extensive period of time where everybody was in masks. And so, it was very difficult to put faces to names and to understand who was who. And so, I'm excited to be out and about, get to know folks again, you know, a little bit, with a little bit more clarity than what the past couple of years have brought. Back-to-school nights went off fantastically last week. So, we're happy to, you know, welcome our parents and guardians into the schoolhouse. This week, our high schools hosted financial aid nights across the district for parents and for the college planning process. We also completed a stabilization aid application in Mr. Boyce's office that was submitted last week. And, you know, I'm not, I, I, things have improved, but what has not improved is the situation with S-2. And so, I'll just bang that drum a little bit longer here. You know, it is, you know, it is a fact that the Freehold Regional High School District has been reduced, you know, close to $25 million in state aid. It is a fact that there are 46, 7 to 12 districts in the state of New Jersey. There are 46 districts that educate students between grades 7 and 12. Some of those are 7 to 12 one-off, some of those are regionals. Of those 46 districts that are comparable to us and what they serve, Freehold Regional is number 45 in spending, right? So, 46 across the state, we're 45th in spending. And I sent this to, I sent this to our state legislators saying, I just want to point out one more time the undue impact that S-2 has had on us. Here's what everybody spends across the state. And here's where we are. At this point in time, you know, this is a high school district that has hundreds of bus runs, hundreds of athletic and co-curricular clubs, hundreds of additional bus runs, coaches, and all that. And all of our K-8s, except for one, spend significantly more than us. That's how efficient we are, right? So, I'm hopeful that the Stabilization Aid Application is designed to provide relief for some districts in this readjustment. My, oh, and I will, I also point it out to our state legislators that our administrative costs, because that's where everybody always goes, right? But get rid of all those administrators. We're 31% lower than those other districts as well. So, you know, we're efficient across the board. And it's unfortunate, the stabilization aid, there was $50 million in the state budget last year for stabilization aid. We applied for and received $1.8 million. We applied again this year, but the state cut that pot to $30 million. So, there's $30 million. And I will point out that if you've been following the news, you might have seen that the Jersey City Public Schools prevailed in a lawsuit against the state of New Jersey because they were cut as an S-2 district as well. And it's unfortunate, I was part of this original, these original conversations and some of this original planning for that lawsuit because what we said was, hey, you can't, you can't cut, you know, these are federal funds. You can't, you can't receive federal funds from COVID-cut districts like you're doing. Well, it turns out we were right, but not for Freehold Regional because you have to have a certain threshold of free and reduced lunch students to prevail in that. And so, we didn't hit that barometer. And that's why we were not part of that lawsuit. But I'm going to publicly again say that it is disgusting that the state of New Jersey, as we all attempt to recover from the pandemic, as we all try to provide the services that we need to provide for students, will cut our district in the midst of all this. That they would cut any district in the midst of all this. They have billions of dollars that are unspent that haven't been, we don't even, people are asking, well, where is that money? It's, we're the worst state in the nation in terms of how the COVID funds have been spent, right? So, this is, this is an issue. And the reason I'm harping on this tonight is because, you know, we've done a really, and Sean's been great with this, but we've done a masterful job of like ducking and diving and weaving. You know, I feel like the guy from Dodgeball, duck, dive, duck. But the, you know, we've, we've been able to sort of manage through it by doing a lot of different things. The referendum for $15 million, you know, the utilization of our reserves and things of that nature, and tightening our belts, right? But we can't be any more efficient at this point in time. And so, that price is coming due. And then, once it settles, it's going to have a significant negative impact on this district. And this is, it's going to be part of our strategic planning process, right? Part of our long-term conversations on how we're even going to approach this. And one of the ways we're probably going to approach it is we're going to have to do some smaller infrastructure-based referendums to even, you know, like we did with the roofing and the paving. By the way, that was, that was just a part of Tier One needs across the district as it was. There's still all these other unmet, unmet needs with the price tag of millions of dollars. So, it's a difficult time. I know that the Stabilization Aid Application is very competitive. There's a lot more districts that applied for this year. It's a very elaborate application. Mr. Boyce and I were not, you know, we had some questions around how things were awarded last year. We, you know, we felt that there were some peculiarities to that. So, we'll see what happens this year. And I'm hopeful that folks are paying attention and seeing what happens in this district. But the numbers, you know, are the numbers in terms of what we spend per pupil, what our efficiencies are. It's compelling. And our return on investment is incredible compared to most districts, right, in terms of what we put in financially and what we get out. And we showed that, we demonstrated that a few years back in Mr. Boyce's budget presentation about how much it cost us to earn a point on a state assessment versus other districts, right? So, last piece, and more information will be forthcoming, but we found out today, you know, the Freehold Regional High School District is a proud member of the League of Innovative Schools. The League of Innovative Schools was started in, I believe, 2014. It really started from under President Obama, actually, where some of the most forward-thinking ed leaders were invited to the White House. So, I was fortunate to be one of those. We, this 2014, we joined the League of Innovative Schools, which is approximately 110 districts, give or take, across the nation that are, have been cited for their forward thinking. And we are in the, we put in an application and we were accepted to be one of 10 districts in the nation in the league to pilot a cybersecurity three-course program that we're going to look to implement. And we're meeting with some higher ed partners. You know, as a high school district, we want to make sure that the opportunities that we're providing students, you know, certainly have a career focus as well. Cybersecurity is a booming industry. I think that we're going to be able to work alongside nine or 10 of the most forward-thinking districts in the country in terms of making this work. And I'm really proud that we were accepted to be one of the 10 districts in the nation to pilot this over the next couple of years. So, you'll hear more about that as we move forward and work the details out. But we just found that out today, so happy to report that.
Thank you. That's great news. That is, the future really, really is. We have one report tonight, and I promise it's going to be short. It's Policy. Mrs. Caffiello?
Okay, I'll be brief. There's two policies that are on the agenda today for the first read. The Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Program Policy and Regulation have been revised to outline the requirement for a school district to have an emergency virtual or remote instruction plan. Plan allows the district to utilize virtual or remote instruction to satisfy the 180-day requirement in the event of a public health-related district closure. During a declared emergency for health or some other reason, the district must be closed for three school days. And then, on the fourth day, a district may implement remote or virtual instruction. The next is the Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Policy, which has been revised to align with the updates in law. Also, there are new procedures and forms that must be in place for allegations of HIB to be documented by a staff member, student, parent, or another adult. I told you I'd be brief.
Thank you. That was fantastic. We have no public participation tonight. So, Mr. Boyce, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a few items I'd like to note. First of all, on the back table, there are addenda. I'll do the I section first, which is Buildings, Transportation, and Physical Plan. The district received bids for roofing work under the referendum for the four remaining schools that are due roofing. Schools were paired, so one of the contracts being awarded under I-6 is for Coltsneck High School and Freehold Borough High School. And the other, which will be I-7, is for Howe High School and Analpan High School. So, bids came in within budget. So, we're going to move forward and award those. Now, we're out a little earlier than we have been in the past for roofing work. And that's just to give more lead time for supplies to arrive on time. So, we thought that was a prudent thing to do. Also, in the back, there's another... Also, in the back, there's another addendum for G2, G3, and G6. Those are additions to existing resolutions, as noted on that agenda. And while I'm in the, that section of the agenda, I have some corrections at the table here. On G4, under approval of lunch duty proctor appointments, please board remove Kimberly Walter from that list. And under G13, I'm gonna change the school location for Lauren Ransom from Freehold Township High School to Marlboro High School. In addition to that, we have one other that I'm gonna ask Mr. Toscano to read into the record for your consideration.
Sure. It'll be item G18, it'll be motion to approve the September 2022 sidebar agreement with the Freehold Regional Bus Drivers Association.
That's all?
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take the report, we're going to G, personnel and negotiations. May I have a motion to approve G1 through G17?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Oh, eighteen, no, wait, no, it wasn't eighteen, eighteen, okay. G1 through G18.
Move. Second.
Not hearing any discussion, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Ah, yes, on everything except in G11, I abstain from Michael Capiello.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except on G3 to Rachel Goff, G6 to Christopher Provo, and G11 to Alicia Salschow and Dennis Flivian.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Great. We're gonna move to H, H and I, program operations, building, transportation, and physical plan. May I have a motion to take H1 through I-6?
Move.
Seven. Seven. I do pay attention, just didn't write it down. Okay, so it's H1 through I-7, may I have a motion?
Move.
Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
Mrs. Lavin, second. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion, roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go to J and K, educational programs and administration. May I have a motion to take J1 through K5?
I have one question?
Yes.
I think it's J21, is there dates incorrect in there? This says May 12, 2022 to August 22. Why would we be approving something in the past? Am I mistaken here?
What's the item? G, right?
Oh, this was for summer, this was for summer employment, so people ended up doing more hours than might have originally been approved, and things like that changed once members of our child, study team members and other folks submit their work logs.
So, they're compensated after we vote?
Some extra work hours?
Correct, these are, these are additional hours.
So, they haven't been compensated?
It's an amendment of the original resolutions in prior months.
Okay, so, may I have a motion to approve J1 through K5?
Motion?
Mrs. Higley?
Second.
Section, Mrs. Capiello? Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Um, yes, on everything except on J4 abstain from Michael Capiello, and in K1, I abstain from Dr. Sampson and myself.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except I abstain J4 as to Matthew Coulson, and K1 as to Dr. Sampson and Mr. Boyce.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Just one second, just please note, Mr. Bruno and Mr. Parisi abstain of K1 as to themselves.
God, I'm making all these mistakes, I thank God I made you, to trick me out. Okay, K1, I abstain, my clinic teacher. All right, we're gonna move to L, old business. Any old business? Okay.
I have new business before anybody else, just introduce.
All right, we're gonna have new, Dr. Sampson has new business.
Rachel Goff, where are you, Rachel? Stand up. So, we appointed Rachel this evening as a special services supervisor for the Freehold Township High School, and Rachel comes to us with a pretty significant experience as a district-level supervisor in the brick public schools. We tried to get Rachel to come here a few years ago, and she, we were fortunate that she decided to come back to us. So, Rachel, welcome, and, you know, we're looking forward to having you here in the Freehold Regional High School District.
Mr. Moses?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Far be it from me to extend the board meeting to those of you who know me, but I have a few things I need to say. Over half a century ago, I know I wasn't a math major, but I'm pretty sure it's over half a century ago, I came to this district, a young 21-year-old teacher. And at that time, my first year, I was teaching at Howell High School. And Freehold Borough was used as a threat to teachers who didn't follow the rules. And I remember they called it, "If you keep this up, we're gonna send you to the ghetto school." Well, things have changed so tremendously in the 50-odd years that I've been in this district. I remember in the early 2000s, we had kids coming from Manalapan and Township and Marlboro and Coltsneck to come to this high school because they knew that it was one of the best-kept secrets in the district, that everybody was accepted here, that you could always find someone to listen to you, that they had exceptional teachers here, and then excellent, excellent support staff and administrators. About 12 years ago, I think it's 12 years ago, I was president of this board, and we were tasked with finding a new superintendent. And I was lucky to be chosen to go out and interview people in other districts who were looking to become the new superintendent in this school district. I had already worked for three, three or four superintendents, and every single one of them was a politician first, and then maybe, maybe, an educational leader. I wanted someone to come to this district who was an educational leader, who was not a politician, who knew how to talk to people, who treated everyone like an equal. And I'm proud to say that we found that person in Dr. Sampson. I think this district is incredibly lucky to have him, and hopefully, the other board members agree with me. Last but not least, I have to say that it's important to know when it's time to go. Some people stay too long, whether it's in athletics, or in politics, or in business, and it is time for me to go. I've always cared about the job that I did here. Some people had a hard time understanding my way of doing things, but that's okay. I just cared whether the students knew that I cared about them. So, effective of, I guess it's November 1st, I'm resigning from the Board of Education. Hopefully, we will find somebody who cares about this school, who cares about the students, about the teachers, about the administrators. And last but not least, I want to thank all the administrators, teachers, custodial staff, everyone who works in this district, because I know 99.9% of them really care about the kids, and that comes first. I was never a politician. I, I, I believe in Jeffersonian democracy, one term, that's it. I wish they would do that in politics, one term, and then you're gone, let somebody else do it. So, I just want to thank Dr. Sampson and everyone else here for the job that you do, and I want the teachers to know that I know how hard you work, I know how hard the administrators work. I just hope that the people in the towns, the eight towns that make up this school district, know that, that they are lucky that their kids go to the schools that make up the six high schools of the Freehold Regional High School District. So, thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to work here for over 50 years.
So, Mr. Moses, you know, I know where you're from, yeah? Remind, started in Asbury Park. A lot of people don't realize that we're both Asbury Park people. I know it's about Freehold tonight, but his roots are in Asbury with mine. Bridge Street? Yeah, Bridge. And his sister and my sister are close friends, they were in each other's weddings. My father taught him in history. I was always very intimidated, his dad, always, because of his stature and he was a cop. And, because your mom was great, but, so, he's an Asbury Park guy, and so am I, and it just so happened, he ended up at Freehold High School, very similar school, Asbury back then, so, but we want you to know, we love you here, but don't forget your Asbury Park days. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we have this plaque for you. And in case it gets cold in Florida, Asbury Park t-shirt. If it gets really cold in Florida, a long-sleeve shirt.
Oh, I love it.
It says, "Among the favorites."
Thank you so much, thank you. So, there was one thing, one thing I forgot to say. When I was president, I used to have very quick board meetings, very quick. I think my record was 15 minutes for a board meeting, and people used to think that it was because I didn't care. The real reason was because I knew that most of the people at the end of the night were administrators who had to be in the school, it's like 6:00 in the morning, they didn't want to be here, and they already knew what we were talking about, because they had already been advised by what was gonna go on. I wanted them out of here, I wanted them to go home. I wanted them to have a life outside of this building, and I hope that the future board members remember that, because I used to think all those board meetings I would see on TV were, would last to like midnight?
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, "My God, what are these people doing?" So, I hope, Pete, for your sake, we keep the meetings, even though I'm not here, breathing.
I haven't broken that record yet.
No.
Nothing is happening.
Hey, so, Mr. Moses, just want to thank you personally, you know, it's been 12 years, but people don't understand, you know, oftentimes, in your role of the board president, especially my first couple of years here, it was not the easiest at that time. These board meetings did, used to be, 100 people in the audience yelling and screaming, it was not always like this. And when I first came here, I was, you know, sort of joined at the hip with you as board president, and we, you know, that's what we, that's what we came out to, and some of the board members have been here that whole time too, Ms. Lavin, Mr. Messinger, it was not easy. And the, there were many nights, my first year in particular, you know, where I genuinely reconsidered my decision to come here on how hard it was. And one of the reasons that I always landed on staying the course was because of your support, and it was unwavering. And, you know, you started out as my board president, but you've very much become my friend, so I wish you nothing but the best, and I will show up on that beach one day like Morgan Freeman in Shawshank Redemption, and we will say hello in Florida.
Enjoy your life.
Enjoy.
Well deserved, on this ship.
Okay, that was great. Any more new business? And not hearing any, we're gonna have a adjournment? Not having a motion?
Mr. Bruno, I was, I was, I prepared a third-page speech for you to drone on, because that's what Heshy would want. I just want to thank you for being a mentor to me, because when I came on, Mr. Assis told me to be board president, I know he's not here tonight, I know that he would be upset with me if I did not say something on his behalf and my behalf. There's really nothing more to say other than thank you for being a mentor to me, and to others on this board, for your service to this district, and as you requested, I will play you a song as you leave. If you don't know, he loves hearing from you. We wish you well, Hesh. A motion for adjournment.
Okay, so I'm gonna, while the Grateful Dead's playing, I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn here.
Motion.
Motion.
Can I say?
Yes.
Lavin? All in favor?
Aye.